Special meeting of the Fargo Park Board of Commissioners of the City of Fargo will be held today at three o'clock. I'm reading this thing in the boardroom. Agenda, one item on the agenda is the Executive Director Candidate Interview. This item may be discussed in an executive session. The legal authority for closing this portion of the meeting is North Dakota Century Code, Section forty-four dash oh four dash one nine dot two. And the topic, as I said, is Executive, uh, Interview for Executive Director Candidate. At this time, a motion would be in order to discuss the next topic in executive session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, we adjourn for executive session.
... leadership, each department's management. Eight leadership problems, only budget, finance, and then just wrap ups.
Okay.
We've got the next two hours set aside, but see how it goes. I think here are thirty-five in the first interview. I think we used up all two hours of the second interview. We were a little bit short, so it'll be about thirty-five questions, so you can kind of pace yourself. And then, of course, we'll start with, you know, just ten or fifteen minutes of your background, your experience, why you're interested, especially on a day like today.
Well, I'll start with that one. I don't know. I'm still trying to figure that one out.
No, without seriousness, I'll answer that part first, and I'll be with you myself. Fargo's well-known throughout the entire country for having a quality park district. It's a national-known organization, and that's what we're looking to be a part of. I am looking to relocate out of Kansas City. I'm high as a Kansas City, except I live in more than that. I have no family. The crime rate in Kansas City's pretty high, so I'm looking to relocate to a place that has quality of life. And it all starts with the park system, in my opinion. And so I start there, and then I look at the schools and housing and whatnot. I have two boys, ages thirteen and nine, so it's very important that I find a place that's a great place to raise a family. Fargo is a, has every amenity that I'm using in a city, but it still has that small town feel. It, Kansas City has two point two million people, and there's traffic everywhere. It's crazy, and Fargo doesn't have that. Fargo's exactly what I'm looking for. There's a little more snow than I'm used to, but that, that's, anybody can adapt to that. So that's why I applied for this position when it came open. Number one, the district. Number two, the quality of life that Fargo offers. Just to background myself, obviously, you guys have seen my resume, but I'm originally from Wichita. I was born and raised, I started in Parks and Recreation when I was three years old. I took a tunneling class in a rec center with the City of Wichita. And I didn't know I was in Parks and Rec, but I was. And so I, when I was in high school, I mowed parks and I mowed the airport for the City of Wichita and different, along the river, things like that. And that was really my first job in Parks and Recreation. Even though I didn't realize I was in Parks and Recreation either, I was just mowing, but I was providing that service for, for the citizens. And I went to college, Sterling College. I thought I was going to be a major league baseball player. And so I played baseball at Sterling, and I didn't get that call. So here I am in Parks and Recreation. After college, I, I didn't know what I wanted to do. I was trying to figure out what I wanted to do. I worked in nonprofit. I worked for a professional hockey team. And that was very enjoyable. I really enjoyed my time, but it just wasn't confusing to raise a family. Always on the road, and the money was, there wasn't a lot of money at all in it. And so I, I tried coaching. I tried being a personal trainer. I was a personal trainer for five years. But that draw to municipal Parks and Recreation was always there, being a public servant and what that means. And I got a job with the City of Wichita full-time as a, in a recreation center. And I oversaw the operations of that particular recreation center. And I finally found, okay, this is my calling. I think baseball's my calling, but since that didn't work out, nobody called me, this is my, my true calling. And I absolutely love what I do. And I, I wanted to climb the ladder. And I, I knew I wanted to do more than just work in a rec center. And so I, I saw a position in Independence, Missouri. I'd never been to Independence. I knew that's where President Truman was from, but it ended there. And so I applied, got the job, and I, I built a sports complex, as well as a water park from the ground up, through construction, development, programming. That was my first intro into being a real, full-time Parks and Recreation manager and leader. And programmed those two facilities from the ground up. I was very proud of, of what we did there. And in two thousand and ten, the recession hit. And when that hit, unfortunately, our department, we had to lay individuals off. And, but out of that, through our reorganization, I was promoted to Assistant Director. And so I assumed more responsibility. I didn't assume a lot more pay, but assumed a lot more responsibility and helped run that department. I had a great director there. He really mentorly taught me what it was to be a public servant. And, and that was my first introduction to working with boards and elected bodies and whatnot. I did that for four years and knew that this was my calling. I wanted to be a leader. I wanted to be a director. And so I got the job there in Kansas City. We're a unique organization. We are both a city government and a county government. So we're a unified government. Just like a district is unique, we, we're very unique. We have county parks and city parks. We have a county budget, a city budget. And so I'm basically doing two jobs, but with one habit. And I absolutely love what I do. I'm very passionate about Parks and Recreation. Some of my, my, oh, things that I'm most proud of, visioning, master planning, construction, development, inclusive play is, is also one of the things I'm most proud of. I'm currently building an inclusive playground in Kansas City. It's, inclusive playgrounds are not ADA playgrounds. Most, everybody's playgrounds are ADA compliant. An inclusive playground says that any child or adult, whether in a wheelchair or disability, never has to leave that wheelchair. The, the ADA says, I go to a transfer station, I then have to remove myself from my wheelchair. Inclusive playgrounds, it allows that individual to stay within their wheelchair, within their boundaries. So they're very expensive. The one I'm building is about one point two million dollars. But we've done private fundraising for that. The Kansas City Royals chipped in on that one, and a couple of Royals players and whatnot. It's a baseball-themed playground, which, that was not my doing, I promise. That was, that's just, that's, the Royals were our main donor, and they said, we want to look like a baseball stadium. And I said, okay. So that's me in a nutshell, and that's my, my passion and my background. Again, I have two boys, ages nine and thirteen, and, like I said, Fargo provides that quality of life that we're looking for, for our family.
Thank you. You want to start, Vicki?
Sure.
Your turn.
Gosh, I created, you created several questions just in things you told us, and so I have to figure out where to put them here, which is great. I like that. But we'll start out easy. That's just, um, what three aspects of your role that you're in right now give you the most satisfaction? And I think you touched on that a little bit.
I did. Seeing a kid's smile that is in my programs, regardless of what program it is, the kid's smile, that's, Parks and Rec, when people think Parks and Recreation, they think youth, because that's predominantly from youth programs. But there's so much more. There's seniors, adults, special needs, on and on and on. But number one, seeing the smiles. Number two is the inclusive playground aspect, the inclusive, providing an opportunity for someone who's never had that opportunity. That's very rewarding. And I'd say number three, uh, is working with people, being a public servant, working with my staff. I love what I do. I, I get to go to work and work in the business of play. That's pretty cool. And I take great pride in that. I don't downgrade that. I, I take it very seriously. And without a quality parks district like Fargo has, it definitely plays into the quality of life of citizens.
Thank you.
All right, Jeremy. So what is one professional mistake that you've made that you wish you could go back and fix?
Um, I'd say early on, I was, when I first became a manager, I was probably not the easiest guy to work for. As a micromanager, I wanted this, this, and this. And when I ran the water park, I worked with a lot of teenagers, a lot of college kids, and you can't do that. It was, I wanted it done this way, and my way was the only way. I, I got a lot of pushback as I showed up, and I had to adjust my management to that. So if I could change one thing, it'd be that.
So what factors make you most effective at work now?
Um, my personal ability, my, my, I care for people. I, my, my employees are people first, employees second. I care about their well-being. I care about what's going on in their lives. And they're people, just like me. And so it's very important I get to know my staff and that I understand what's going on in their lives. There's, some people are more open about what's going on in their lives. And I, it's, I, I keep personal life here, work-life here, but at the same time, they're my work family. I'm with them a lot more than I am my own family. So it's very important that we have a working relationship and we understand what, who each other are.
Let's see. Tell us about your proudest professional accomplishment. What was it and what were the results?
Uh, my most proudest accomplishment is building the inclusive playground in Camp, or in Independence. We built one there in Independence. And that's why I learned what inclusive play was. And we also, with that project, we built an inclusive ball field for the Miracle League. Children in wheelchairs can play T-ball and baseball and whatnot. And so I was very proud of that project. It, there were no inclusive playgrounds in Kansas City. We were the first one in Independence. But we're also the only inclusive ball field within a four-hundred-mile radius. So we provided opportunities for children who had never even got the opportunity to play baseball or had to travel so far. So that was, I worked with the Cal Ripken Senior Foundation on that one. Got to meet Cal Ripken Jr., and he came to our wriggling cutting, and got to meet a lot of neat people through that process.
You touched on my last question in here, this category, but, but one thing in your resume, and I'm just curious, talking about presentations and the healthy concessions?
Yes.
It just piqued my interest as far as, I don't know if we need healthy snacks or making concessions more healthy, profitable-wise?
Right.
That's one thing we struggled. Maybe just talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, when I was in Independence, at the water park, we, we struggled with our concessions. And I took my kids there, and I go to the concession stand, and there's nothing healthy. And I'm like, man, this is my concession stand, and I'm failing here. And so I worked with our concession manager, and we came up with a plan. And we did some studies of what other people have done. And we reached out to the University of Missouri Extension Office. And they were doing some studies, but they had no, there was no trial to go off of. And so we partnered with them, and they gave us lots of resources. They gave us some funding. And we put forth a menu that highlighted some healthy options. We still offered those options, but a lot of it was marketing. We didn't market the hamburgers, the hot dogs, and pretzels. We marketed the fruit and the, the low-calorie options and put that big and bold, and still had the hot dogs, hamburgers on the back burner. And that was very successful. That was a very successful project. I'm very proud of that one, too.
Where, I'm sorry, where did you say you did that? Where did you start?
City of Independence at Adventure Oasis Water Park.
Okay. The water park that you said you built?
Yes.
So let's get our management-style staff theory. Describe a time when you had to confront an employee whose results were inadequate in the results of that.
Um, I have a marketing manager right now that was not meeting the, the needs of the department, meaning the goals of the department. So I called her, and she is not a direct report to me. She is a direct report to one of my assistant directors. And so we sat down with her and went over her work. And she thought she was doing a great job. So number one, we felt her. My, my philosophy is, there should be no surprises. There, immediately, if you put something out that I don't agree with, we're going to talk about it, and we're going to discuss it. And, and so we sat down with her and went through her work and showed her, this isn't the message that we're delivering. This is not what it should look like. This is what it should look like. And we laid it out, and then we documented it. We worked with her and did progress reports, kind of things. And gradually, she, she's much more comfortable in her role. And come to find out, she didn't have any guidance. So that was, I took that on me and my assistant director, that we didn't give her the guidance that she needed and the, the support. And so it's been very successful, but it's constant communication. We're always in communication and, and discussing how we can get better.
All right. So I'll just piggyback on that. Give us an example of a method you have used to successfully, successfully encourage or motivate your staff.
I'm always looking for different ways to motivate staff. I, work, work. We gotta have fun. So I'm always trying to keep it upbeat. And especially when things get rough, it's very important that my staff see that I don't pan, and that I'm calm, I'm collected, and that we're going to get through it. It's not life and death. And so I'm always finding different ways to motivate my staff. At our Christmas party, I will get up and sing Christmas carols on the fourth of December. And, and we auction off a, a day off. They do a draw name, do drawings for days off. I have union employees, so I have to be careful with that aspect of it. That, because if I offer a day off, I have to somehow compensate everybody else. So it can get dicey. But just a constant, thank you, pulling them into my office, hey, I saw what you did there. That was great. I really appreciate that. Keep up the good work. If you need anything, let me know. So, communication.
Thank you.
So maybe you've already answered that one.
No.
Um...
Managerial best experience.
Well, I was going to talk about handling conflict and some, maybe a specific example or situations, and how you dealt with them.
Conflict with employees?
Yeah, with staff, with, with user groups, communities that you deal with.
Absolutely. There's, when you're in, working with pub, the public, there's always conflict, and whether it be with staff. Example with staff, I have two front desk ladies that did the exact same job. Took reservations, answered phone calls. And for some reason, their personalities, they hated each other. And they were always, it was making my life miserable. So I called them in, and I sat them down, and we just talked. What's going on? Why, why are you guys at each other's fur? What is going on? Come to find out, one of the ladies chewed her gum loud, and it just, it festered and festered and festered. And so we changed our policy on gum chewing. Chewing your gum at lunch, not chewing during that. I wanted to be respectful of others. And, and just little things like that, that can fester and build and build it before you know it's out of control. So I like to address those issues before they do get out of control. It's very important that when I do talk with user groups, I want to use the field. I want to use the field. Well, I'm entitled. I pay. Each group thinks they're entitled, so we sit down, and we try to find a compromise. It's very important that, I'm all about compromising and doing the best, the greatest good for the greatest number of people. If there's an organization here that serves five hundred kids, this organization serves fifty kids, this isn't going to get more usage than this fifty kids, because we got to serve a greater number of people. Obviously, I wish we had a field for both of them, but how can we compromise? Can you give up a night so that they can have a night? Can you not request eight, eight days instead of, and allow them to use, use the field? So sit, I, I like to sit down, communicate, get all the issues out front, and be transparent. It, it's pretty cut and dry. I don't like to, to beat around the bush. I don't like to avoid it. Let's get it over with and move on with our lives, because we have a, a big job to do.
Okay. So can you drive, describe your hiring philosophy? Do you promote from within, or do you hire externally? Why?
It all depends. My philosophy is to hire the best person for the job, the best skillset. I know what I want for that particular position. When I got to Kansas City, hiring was based on relationships. There's a requirement that every employee, part-time or full-time, has to live in the city. So everyone's related. I'm the only one...
There's a, there's a requirement now?
Yes. Yeah. Everyone that is employed there has to live in the city. So everyone's related. They've all grown up together. They've all, and divorced and married. This person, it's just, it's a, a social weave of people. And so that's created a lot of issues for me, being a...
I can imagine.
And it, I can, and I was expecting, some people expected me to hire this person or this person. Well, that person's not qualified. They have no experience. Why would I put them in a position to fail? I'm not hiring this outside who has great experience. I'm not bringing them in, give them the resources they need to succeed, and then train up the people that, that don't have those skillsets or that don't. And so that's been a huge challenge. That's been my greatest challenge in Kansas City, is trying to fill those positions with quality individuals that are qualified for that position, and not just because of who they're related to. But I've changed that philosophy. My department, I'm involved with all of the hiring. Normally, I, I wouldn't be. I would let my assistant directors and superintendents hire the lower, the people out, out on the, on the front lines. But because of that reason, I'm involved. I sit in on interviews for every employee. And it's time-consuming. It's overwhelming, but it has to be done to make sure that as I build my team, one position opens, I'm, I'm, I'm hiring the right person for the job. Example of that, I'm an employee that worked there for twenty years. And I just got the elected body approved for me to get a new assistant director over to the recreation side, brand-new position. And our recreation manager has been there for twenty-five years, started as a part-time employee, climbed her way up. That's all she knew was how to program a recreation center. Well, if you look at our program numbers in the recreation center, we're lacking there. So I knew something was off there. I opened the position up, advertised it nationally, and I hired an individual from Kansas City, Missouri. And I thought, I, I was, I was looking, constantly looking over my shoulder, because I did not promote from within. And so that was huge controversy. Several employees went to my boss and told him that I'm mean and I'm a bad guy. But that's okay. It worked out. I hired the best person for the job, and our department's more successful because of it.
Oh, it's my turn. How many full-time staff do you have?
Eighty-nine full-time staff.
And then assuming you have seasonal staff?
Yeah, we do.
And the water park is seasonal? So it closes up when it gets to like sixty?
Opens Memorial Day. Exactly. In fact, we, we open Memorial Day, weekend, the Saturday Memorial Day, till the, the Sunday before school starts.
Okay. And the only reason I'm asking is, you know, we obviously have seasons, and we would have...
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
We, there are others. This is not the only one.
I will leave you on that.
We have a construction season, too.
You know, a pair of these roads that are currently being...
Very. We don't have poples in the winter, though.
Very nice.
Cold as snow.
That's right. Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask the same confusing question that I've asked everyone else. So, so rank the importance of the following groups and explain why they would rank in this order. Staff, community, user groups, and the board of directors.
Number one's the community. That's why we're here. We're here to serve them. Without the community, we don't have, we don't have jobs. And so it's very important that, as a public servant, that we are serving the community and not ourselves. So staff, board, user groups. Second would be staff. It's very important that we have a good quality staff, all working together with the same common goal. And so without a quality staff, you can have the best facilities, but unless you have the right people in the positions, those facilities are not going to be used to their demands. The next is the, the user groups. They, they go back to the, the, I hate to put you guys last, but there'll be someone else that...
Would you like to back up your answer?
User groups, I put in with the community, because they are part of the community and they, and then, of course, the board. You guys make the decisions and sign off on, on everything. So you...
So we're the last of three and not fourth?
But you switch back to the...
First, we're, so we're not the first with you. Well, I see you grabbing them right here.
It's a cycle. Without the board, we don't have the facilities without it. So it's a constant, not one is better than the other.
The why is more important to me than your order. So I, I, thank you.
But just to clarify quick before we move forward, and I don't, because you say each is set up differently. We are elected members of our board that the city, the citizens of the city are electing to represent them, since they can't all be in here asking questions every single day. Whereas across the street over here in Moorhead, they're a line item in their city budget, and therefore, the, the city office appoints board members, and they aren't necessarily a direct line to the public. Like, we should be.
And so you guys are citizens. You're, you're representative of citizens.
Well played.
So you, you go back to number one.
So we're winners.
We think we're number one, no matter what.
Exactly.
I don't think you figured all bustle.
So I'm just curious, before we move on, so you, you, you're a unified board of city and county?
Yes.
So do you have a single board? What's your structure?
I do have, I report to the county administrator. But I do have a board, a hard board, an advisory board. Now, when they were county, it was a decision-making board. They were elected by the citizens. Now, they are appointed by our elected body, our county commissioners. And so they're a representation of the community, of the elected body. And I still have some board members. That was in ninety-seven when they combined. And I still have three board members that were around in ninety-seven that are still on the Parks Board. And so they still assume that they're a decision-making board. So I have to respect that. And they've given a lot to the community and to Parks and Recreation. So I value their input. I just have to remind them that I need to run this by my, by the county administrator before I act on this. And that, that's a delicate...
So they're advisory to you, but like budgetary things and operations and new development goes up through your city director?
It goes through, it goes through the Park Board and then up to the, the city, the county administrator.
So they just make recommendations?
Right.
For what they think should be.
I lay out my budget for them, and they, I create the budget. I start that process, and I lay it out for them and let them hash what we need, more money here, less money here, why are we doing this? And it's quite the process. And then, so I take all their input, and when I go to the county administrator, I use the input that they give me.
Excuse me. Interesting. Do you have county staff separate from city staff? Do they intermingle?
Uh, I have some staff that have been around for, my longest tenure's staff is forty-nine years, so he's almost at fifty. So he was around before the consolidation. He still thinks he's a county employee. But all my staff are combined.
Okay. So they all play together in the same, and if you needed something over here?
Right.
You wouldn't go, oh, darn it, that guy's the county guy. He can't do something in town.
Right.
You act as...
You need to step one budget.
You act as one?
Yep.
Okay.
But within my budget, I do have a county, because the county gets taxed, a tax that the city doesn't get. And so I do have that over here in this line. And I can only use it in certain parts of the city.
Because you, you have different districts in the city, and they pay different taxes, right?
Yes.
There were, a few years ago, there was a controversy in one neighborhood that they added on or increased the city tax for...
That's the one I live in. That's the one I lived in.
Okay.
Yeah, it is very interesting.
So you have a diverse community you live in?
Absolutely.
Where you have people who, they expect certain things because they may feel they're more affluent than the others in the field.
And there'll be others that are completely opposite of the spectrum. We have no money, so you should give us this service. And so that balancing that's a, it's a test.
Am I up again? I think I'm up.
You're up.
As an executive director, you'll find yourself at events or different things where you would be working the room. How do you, who do you pick? Who do you talk to? How do you treat different people? Where do you spend your time and energy? What might that look like?
I treat everyone the same. I want to give the little kids high five. If it's a, oh, an Easter egg hunt, I'm going to be there giving the kids high fives. I'm going to be shaking the parents' hands and thanking them for coming. And then I'm going to make sure I seek you guys out and thank you guys for your support and coming. And no one's greater than anybody else. Obviously, this position reports to this board, so I'm going to make sure that you guys are tuned to what we're doing and that I'm there and I want you guys to know I'm there in supporting the department, but I'm also going to give the little kids high fives and fist bumps and stuff like that.
Thank you. Want me to go again? I'm just here.
I mean, we talked, I mean, he answered a lot of questions about dealing with the board, so. All right, describe your experiences with strategic planning. What plans have you developed and implemented in the past outside of the playground?
I think the strategic plan is the most important aspect of a department or a district. If you don't have vision, if you don't have a roadmap, if you don't know where you're going to get there. And so it's very important that you have a roadmap to strategically guide the district. Independence was my first, my first time learning and doing a strategic plan. When I first got there, we did a complete, brand-new comprehensive master plan. About eight years into it, oh, six or seven years into it, we did a redo of an update. And we went out to the citizens. It's very important that when doing a comprehensive plan, we get citizen input because that's why we're here, we're here to serve them. And so it's very important. Like I said, I know what I want in Parks and Recreation. I want baseball fields, I want baseball fields, I want, I love baseball. Not everybody does. Some people want cooking classes, some people want TRX exercise classes, spinning classes, everything that goes into a Parks and Recreation district. And so it's very important that we're not just, we're getting the input of the citizens and finding out what they want. Obviously, we have some crazy requests from citizens, I'm sure you guys hit them too, that just aren't feasible, but we listen to them. And it's very important regardless of how crazy, how astronomical the request is, it's very important that it's heard. And so that's, that's always on my mind when I'm doing a comprehensive plan. Secondly, is when I got to Kansas City, I learned that the department was started in nineteen eighteen and they had never done a master plan. That bothered me that, how can you operate without guidance or without vision? And so it was very important that I created that. So it's a two-year process because we're catching up since nineteen eighteen on where we're taking this department. We went to the citizens, we had eighty-six meetings with the community, different user groups, different citizens. It was an exhausting process. But at the end of the day, we had a very viable, usable, workable comprehensive plan. And once it was done, now to implement it. It's very important that when doing a comprehensive plan, the plan is to implement it and not just sit on a shelf collecting dust. And so that's a process I've been working on in Kansas City is whatever I do, I always go back to the master plan. Well, if I'm going to put money towards this, I'm going to make sure that that's what the citizens said that they wanted in that master plan.
I want to follow up, I got, before I ask, I have a question. But do you have a capital plan that has items on it that may take five, six, eight years to get to, but it still sits on that plan or how do you deal with those?
Yes, we do. That's part of our comprehensive master plan and there are some pie-in-the-sky type things down the road. In Kansas City, the main one is a water park, a regional. Ours right now is just a neighborhood. And so we want to expand our swimming population in Kansas City. And so as I'm, as I'm building up my budget and as I'm working on my capital projects, I'm always looking at that and making sure that that's still the plan and that we're doing what it takes in order to get there. It may be eight, ten years down the road, but this is the direction we're going when we get to. I have a parks foundation that I work with. They're separate from the board and they do a lot of fundraising. I make sure that they understand, here's what's coming down the pipe for the next five, ten years of this department. I'm going to need your guys' help in some alternative funding. And so let's research, let's strategically plan how we're going to be able to finance this in five, ten years.
So my question is, have you had experiences or situations where maybe one of your board members is having to deal with, say, a user group or, you know, negotiating something without your knowledge or maybe working with some of your staff on, you know, giving them direction without your knowledge? Any of those kind of situations and how to deal with them?
Absolutely. One of the issues I had was an elected county commissioner coming to one of my employees, one of my assistant directors, and giving him a directive. And I wouldn't find this out until months down the road, until it's too late to address it. And so I would call him, I called him in and told him, here's our policies. Here's what the HR guide says. You are not to take a directive from a elected official. That's our HR guide. So that was my backbone for being able to, to not discipline, but start the process if needed. And I showed him that, I had him sign it. And we wrote an SOP of how to handle when you're contacted by someone other than me that gives you a directive. And we specifically wrote out the steps and what needs, what it needs to look like. It's been very successful. And it really helped, she did not get elected, re-elected, so that someone else can get elected. She was doing that throughout the entire organ, but not just Parks and Rec. She was doing public works and all the other city, county governments. I need to get another water.
Oh, absolutely.
You're about seventeen into the thirty-five, so you probably need to refill.
Not quite the seventh inning stretch yet.
You've owned your kindred spirit. So when we get you a golfer, you want to go out and play catch?
I will play catch today, yes.
All right. We have a large diverse park system and many community partners. How would you approach managing the disparate interests of stakeholders? Board, staff, community partner volunteers, donors? So you have your example of a Roke commissioner.
Right.
How would you handle multiple groups converging?
It goes back to the greatest good for the greatest number of people. It also goes back to the comprehensive plan. What is the plan? What's the direction of this department? If, I'm trying to think of an example of who we would not want to serve. We won't serve everyone, but let's say a fencing group or came in and wanted to use the gym during our youth basketball season. And were, they were adamant, they were outspoken and went public with how we were not serving them. I would sit down with each group, here's what we do, here's what the comprehensive plan says. We have seven hundred kids over here, we have ten people over here. We're going to make sure that they are getting what they need. We're here to serve the youth, we're here to serve you as well. Where can we, how can we work with you without disrupting folk here? So again, compromise, trying to find that, that was kind of a weird extreme example, but it's all I thought of. And at the end of the day, we're here to serve people. So compromise and try to work with everyone. There are some people that you just can't please. No matter what you do, you just can't please them and you have to accept that.
We'll tell you who are pleased, unpleased or whoever.
Every, every community has them and no matter what you do, you just can't please them. And when I first started with Parks and Recreation, I used so much energy and exhausted myself trying to please these people. You just can't do it. So I accepted and we agreed that you just can't please yourself. Good luck.
Thank you.
How do you handle questions or criticisms from the media?
I always try to spin it into a positive. I give facts, I keep it short and simple. And if you stick to the facts, you can't go wrong. And media loves to spin it, they love to. An example of that, when I was at the city of Independence, we removed a lady from the water park. We asked her to leave for her clothing and it was unacceptable for our rules. And so we asked her to leave, she refused to. We, she berated a little sixteen-year-old like her maiden cry and was using profanity and whatnot. So we had the police remove her. She went to the parking lot and called the local news station, said that we kicked her out because she was obese and made a big deal out of it. And it went international. I received a call from Germany of a guy cussing me out with the German accent that I was mean to this lady. And if you look on YouTube, lady kicked out of a water park, you'll find numerous stories on this situation that the media spun it, which was, we had every right to kick her out. We eventually were able to show the video, the cell phone footage of her threatening this little sixteen-year-old kid. And it worked out in the end, but we had to go through some heartache because of the media.
Next category is change leadership problem solving. What would your top three priorities be in the first six months of employment?
The top, number one priority is getting to know my staff. Who they are, what they are, how they do it, what they do, where they do it, all that. Getting to know their strengths, their weaknesses. When I started at Kansas City, I asked all my employees to give me a bio. I want to know who you are, what you enjoy to do, what you not like to do, what is your job? What's your favorite thing of your job? What, if money weren't an issue, what's your dream job? I found out one of my employees in Kansas City always wanted to be a go-go dancer in Las Vegas. And I thought that was pretty cool. And she was serious, that's what she wanted to do. But she's working in Parks and Rec, so. Number one is get to know my staff. Number two is get to know the community. Find out who the key stakeholders are, all the user groups, all the, you guys. Learn what you guys are looking for and the direction that you want to see. And then third is looking at the facilities, the fields, the buildings, the infrastructure. And throughout this entire period, I'm looking for gaps. I'm looking for gaps in funding, programming, staffing, any resource you can think of. I'm looking to see where, I'm not going to make any major changes. Obviously, this department is a national success. A lot of changes aren't needed, little guidance, but not major, major changes. So I'm going to be looking for those little things where I can insert my experience to maybe help that speed that process.
All right. Have you had experience with natural disasters? Please describe your reactions, action, and communication plan.
You stole Joe's question.
I have a few of the snow on the ground, so our river is going to flood.
Yes. This summer, Kansas and, I have a park that sits on the Kansas and Missouri River where they meet. It's called Pink Park, it's where Lewis and Clark, they stayed there for ten months or something like that. So it's a historical site. It all flooded, everything washed down somewhere. It's in the Mississippi now. And I've dealt with that, the flooding of that and the rebuilding. I've dealt with tornadoes, I've had a few tornadoes hit my parks. The worst thing I've dealt with though, it's not necessarily a natural disaster, it's a death. I've had seventeen deaths in my parks since I started in Kansas City. Again, I don't, I'm not going to bash Kansas City, I love my job, but the crime is very high. I've had drug deaths. I had three hundred kids in a rec center for a youth activity and I had a drug deal go bad in the parking lot. And the way the parking lot was, it was only one way in, one way out. Well, the bodies of the two deceased were laying right in the way. So the bus that was carrying the kids couldn't get out. So I had kids there until two o'clock in the morning. Dealing with that, dealing with the public, I worked with our sheriff's department, our police department, our public information officer to make sure that we were getting word out and our kids are armed. Everyone is safe. There's an unfortunate event and we're dealing with it. I've had suicides, drownings. Those are not fun, those are the, that's the worst part of my job. Because as the overseer of the property, I have to sign their death certificate. That is not something I enjoy.
So here at Fargo, and you've met the staff, we've got a lot of long-term tenured people. Our once-removed executive director was here for twenty years. So I mean, it's kind of like everything was on autopilot. So that's kind of the lay of the land. But I want to ask you, what's coming next in Parks and Recreation? What's the next big thing that's coming down as, that, I mean, you must have your own ground, listening to what, where things are going, what's happening? Where do you see Parks and Recreation in the next five years? What are we going to be doing? What's going to change? And then after that, how do we deal with staff?
Right.
Get them to work.
Number one, society is changing. Example I saw in one of the facilities I went into, all gender bathrooms. That's something that you don't think about in Parks and Recreation. I had a demand to put all gender restrooms in one of my parks. And I didn't think of that until that came up. And so changing with society, everybody has a cell phone, everybody's connected. People want to be connected, they want information instantly. And so it's very important as Parks and Recreation professionals that we're providing that. That we are, when I'm in a park or when our citizens are in a park, they want to be connected, which I think goes against what a park should be for. It is a chance to connect, but they want to, they want to disconnect while still being connected. And so it's very important that we provide those opportunities and that we are Wi-Fi hotspots throughout parks. Obviously, buildings have Wi-Fi and just providing those opportunities for citizens. A lot of folks in communities are looking for places just to, just a simple bench in a park to birdwatch. Whatever you want is more static recreation than the old roll-up-the-ball type program. We still have to provide that, but that's, Parks and Recreation is changing and getting away from that. So it's very important. And as we look to staff it, I'm looking at that lower top tier of the under-management and that middle management. I'm looking for them to identify individuals that will be able to step into that role within the next ten, fifteen years. And some of the younger employees that are in tune with, the kid, the class that graduated this last May only knew cell phones, they never grew up without a cell phone. And so that's different than us. And so it's very important that I'm listening to, as Fargo's growing very fast, there's a lot of younger families coming in. With that younger family, they have different wants and different needs. And if a young family has younger kids, it's very important that we are catering to that toddler, under-five category. If you look at the demographics of Fargo, the kindergarten, first grade, second grade classes are so much bigger than everyone else because so many families are moving in with young kids. And it's very important that we provide those opportunities and we listen to what they want. And a family with young kids is different than a family with teenagers or middle-school type- And a family with young kids is different than a family with teenagers or middle-school-type kids, high-school kids.
Don't let him know I'm empty-nester.
Okay, so one of Fargo's premier parks needs a refresh. It's Lindenwood Park, if they were able to get you close enough to it.
I would not, but I did some research.
Okay. Tell us about your experience in master planning a refresh of an existing park facility. Also, tell us about your approach to a refresh, to include your overall approach to the planning process, identifying funding sources, obtaining the community involvement, et cetera.
First of all, I'm going to look at what's there, what is existing, what, why does it need refurbishment? Why does it need a facelift? What infrastructure is currently in place? Now I'm going to go to the citizens and ask them what, here we're looking at doing a redo, a facelift on this park. What do you want to see? What do you like that's there? What do you want to see? And give them options to choose from of what they might want to see at that park. Then I have a plan. Then I know exactly what I want to do with that park. And then I build the master plan of that park from there. And with that, I create funding. I'm looking at funding sources. I'm scoping out the work and the, what it's going to take. A popular thing in Parks and Recreation are these playgrounds that are ropes, that are just ropes, and climbing and apparatus. Kids love to climb. And all these new playgrounds with all these bells and whistles, you put that next to a playground with a rope, just a rope course, and kids are going to gravitate towards those ropes. They love to climb. So it's very important that we understand that and that we are in tune. When we are doing facelift, when we do have opportunities to maybe replace a traditional playground with something that's state-of-the-art and maybe a little more cost-efficient. It is, those playgrounds are much cheaper, so it is nice to try to save money when we're redoing things. So that's a budgeting. I'm going to look for funding sources. I'm going to look for partners. If we don't have it in our general fund, in our operating budget, obviously, we're going to reach out and try to find who can we partner with, who can we help, who can help us and we help them in building this facelift. And reaching out to the community and those funders and finding grants. I like grants sometimes. They can be overwhelming. They can be not worth your bang for your buck. So it's very important. Grants are great when it benefits the department. And a lot of times, grants do not benefit, so it's very important that we do our research to find that alternative funding that benefits the district.
Can I ask a follow-up question? When you're talking to the citizens about Lindenwood's.
You're stealing my question. Just go. Okay, go ahead.
No, you go right ahead. So Lindenwood is an old park and it has a campground in it. And during the election, when Vicki and I were running, they, someone thought they were going to expand the campground. And so the neighborhood which I live in, just, that's the hot button. The only question anybody wanted to know, what are you going to vote for for this? And they said, I hate campground. Anyway. But when you talked about going out and asking the citizens what they want, what are some of the ideas you have to engage the citizens?
Public meetings, obviously, is the easiest way. Park board meetings are a great start. And then I'm going to go out into the community. I'm going to go meet with them. Meet citizens in the park, go talk to the users, the user groups that are already using it. Start there and then branch out. A social media blast with surveys and Survey Monkey sending those out through all our contacts that have registered for a campground there, things like that. But I think start there with the users and the park board in those meetings and then branch out.
I was just asking, Stacey, sorry to get in the way. And actually, that was part of my question. The other piece is going off of what Stacy asked you is, you know, the public meeting, you're going to get certain groups. People are in the park, you're going to get certain groups. How do you, how would you gather what that quiet person wants? Or the person who's working two jobs who can't get to your meetings once? And you touched on it a little bit, but, and then how do you, how do you deal with the, you know, I want an eighty-four-person hot tub versus here's, here's realistically what we're going to put in this space?
Right. First part of your question, reaching those, you're never going to reach everyone. There's always somebody that says, I didn't know about that. I didn't get that information. That's, I try to minimize those. Social media is great. Even the amount where Skew Jobs probably has social media. Door-to-door neighborhood canvassing within a group, within a certain area around the park. I don't like doing neighborhood canvassing. It's not my favorite thing. But I have a community in Kansas City that is very Hispanic-populated, that they do not come to public meetings. They do not get out, they do not leave their circle. So it's very important that I go to their circle. And I take individuals off my staff that are comfortable in that situation, that can speak the language. And that's how I do that. So no matter what, you're going to miss somebody, but I try to limit those. And I don't put a limit on how we get that word out. If my staff have a great idea, off-the-wall idea, it's worth a try. Let's see if it works. Second part of your question, could you repeat that?
Oh, so they come to you and say, hey, I want forty-eight, eighty-four, two-hundred-and-sixty-person hot tub?
Yeah. Yes, I say, me too. That's interesting. I do too. I think that'd be great. However, that's not the direction that this district's going. Here's what the comprehensive plan said. We were, I will see where that fits in. Maybe it will fit in. Maybe every citizen in Fargo wants one giant hot tub. And if so, then I think we should provide it. But until then, we're going to go with the greatest good for the greatest benefit.
Will that be an indoor hot tub or an outdoor hot tub?
Today, indoor.
I just want to build on one thing that you talked about, community engagement. And we have our own version of community engagement at 1:30 today with you. Meeting with a lot of our key constituents. How did that go?
That went very well. I thought they were very in tune to. When I meet with citizens and user groups, they are the most important person in the room. They're individual group. They really don't care about what this group's doing. They're there for their group. And so it's very important that when I'm talking to them, when I'm addressing them, we're focused on their group and that I'm listening to them. And then as the executive director, I remind them, we all play in the sandbox together. It's not just your sandbox. So we need to be cognizant of other individuals, our other user groups. And that's a tough, it's a tough line.
How many people were there today?
Fifteen, maybe.
Okay, so they did, they did get here.
You were?
I was a little worried.
I was too.
But they're, you know, they're as excited as we are, so I'm glad they, I'm glad they all got here. So our next topic is budget and finance. And you've touched on this, or at least teased us enough to hear some of this. But talking about fundraising and planning and going to certain groups and, you know, maybe tell us a little bit about your fundraising experience, how that's gone, what techniques you use, how you think it, what works, what doesn't work.
Fundraising is not my favorite thing to do. It's a very important part of the job, but it's not my natural, I'm not a salesman. And so it's very important that I'm aware of that when I go ask somebody for money. And it's very important when I do, I show that individual how it benefits them. People usually don't just give money away to give money away. There's got to be some kind of return on investment. And so it's very important as an executive director that I show them exactly, here's where your money's going. Here's how you will be benefiting, your organization, your company, your personal, whatever. That's, that's number one is that I show them. And then be personable, I think, when asking for money. It's very important that many individuals that are philanthropic are very successful people. Obviously, they're successful people, so it's very important. I respect that. And that I do my research prior and understand how they got to be successful, what their organization does, and try to cater towards that. Example, Cowherd and Junior, or Cowherd and Senior Foundation building an inclusive ball field in Independence. I met with the representatives from Cowherd and Senior Foundation. I told them our project. They are already in tune to those types of projects because that's kind of what they do. But I went and showed them how Kansas City, Central America, it's, we have Royals right there. Cowherd and Junior, his first home run in Royals Stadium. So I catered to that and they loved the idea. They loved the fact that we did have the Royals connection there. And Cowherd and Junior, they took it to Cowherd and Junior, presented it to him. He called me personally and said he wanted to be a partner of that. That was really cool that I must have done something right to feed their interest. So I think it's just being personable, communicating, and being very clear-cut on what the objectives are and how it will benefit them.
I want to ask something quickly that, you said Cowherd and Junior did his first home run there. How'd you know that?
He did it off of Dennis Leonard, who is a friend of mine. He's a pitcher. I got to know him through a fishing club in Kansas City. And he always told me about how he gave up Cowherd and Junior's personal money.
I was wondering if you had done your homework before you did this, but you happen to have that connection.
Yes.
It's that whole, everybody's related again.
Exactly. It's scary.
And he enjoyed his time in Kansas City so much that he retired there.
Yes, yes, absolutely. Now, I will say, when I met Cowherd and Junior, when he came there, a little kid asked, in a wheelchair, asked for his autograph. And he was not nice. He was having a bad, Cowherd and Junior was having a bad day and told the kid where to get the autograph. I lost a little respect for him, but I still took his $200,000 of the playground.
Some were taken out of it.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, he gave a good speech at our PAs.
That was great. And it was all about Cowherd. You could tell he was, he's there and, but that's how he got to where he is.
Successful, that we say, often are.
That was a great speech, though.
All right, so you've touched on it a little bit, but if you could go into more specific detail for us, describe your experience in planning and executing a budget.
It's very important. When I execute a budget, I'm very transparent. I'm very data-driven. My budget is online. You can go see what I spend my money on and what, where our money's going. It's very important that when I'm using taxpayers' monies, I'm using the government's money, the district's money. That's not my money, so it's very important that I show the community where that money's going. It's very important that we tie that, those executions back to a comprehensive plan. That here's what we promised you we would do. Now here's us doing it. I think that's very important, that we show the community exactly where our money's going. And so I'm always thinking about that when I'm executing a budget, that I am transparent and that every purchase can be justified. Because I don't want to get mixed up and there's numerous stories out there of people who have misused funds. And I want nothing to do with that. So I'm over-transparent.
So you've got enough money to buy a new, build a new splash pad and the community will love you for it. Or you could take that money and pour it in three or four parking lots that have fallen in disrepair. I didn't want to, you know, operational maintenance versus new and sexy. You know, how do you balance that? Because obviously, everybody's attracted to the shiny penny.
Right. My philosophy is take care of what you have first. It's very important that we do take care of what we got. Because I'm going through that in Kansas City. We got this master plan. Everybody wants something new. I still got playgrounds from the nineteen-fifties. I have a merry-go-round in my playground system. So that, that's how old we are. And so that.
Teeter-totters too?
Yes, absolutely.
Something down.
Yes, so it's very important that I replace that playground before I build something new. And that's my philosophy. It's a give-and-take. It's constant. I like to tease with something new, that, like those ropes playgrounds. Put up a $20,000 ropes program or ropes playground instead of building an $80,000 playground and then use the rest of the $100,000 to fix things. So I try to find that compromise. But that's a tough, I can give and take.
Okay. Let me answer one question. Let's see. I'll just move on to this one.
You just want to pass it over to me? I can answer it.
I'll just, okay, we're in the.
Don't steal Rusty's question.
I have to.
Go ahead.
This is totally yours.
She stole mine, now she's stealing yours?
This is a lot longer. Okay, we're in the development stage of building a multi-use sports complex. What's your experience in developing fundraising for any large project like this? I know you had a water park.
Right.
And I don't know, you know, we have a foundation that we've been working with, so you have experience with that. So let's see, the rest of the question is if you haven't done that. So that was my question. Explain how you would, let's say you started work tomorrow and you knew we're midway in our funding. Communities midway on board. We don't really even know what the project exactly is going to look like. What do you do?
I look at the landscape, okay? Here, who, you talk to, who have any time to, who's philanthropically within the community. We don't want to keep bugging them. Oh, we don't want to, so we want to make sure that we are tapping into the hospitals, the larger organizations and start from scratch and developing relationships with those key players and finding out what they're, what they are looking to do from a philanthropy standpoint and how this project, this athletic complex can benefit them. And then trying to build a partnership and eventually hopefully get some funds. So getting to know the people and learning who the key stakeholders are.
How do you feel about the recovery, cost recovery, you know, for user fees and how it should be?
I think a facility like that, just for that facility, should be pretty close to 100%. A lot depends on the direction of the board, what you guys feel it should be. My opinion is a facility like that should probably recover a lot. But I feel a lot of my facilities in Kansas City should recover a lot, but that's not how the elected board has voted. So we do subsidize. We are subsidized 93%, which is the largest of any department I've ever heard of in the country. So it all depends on the elected body and how they feel it should be. But my opinion is that we should probably recover a lot of this cost.
I'm going to segue into Rusty's question.
I can't disappoint Stacy.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right. So, yeah. So on our budget, and I don't want to be looked at, I don't want to distract you to know it. So roughly thirty-one million, roughly an 80%, 20% split, or 80% publicly funded, 20% private.
Right.
If you were told that we want less dependency on public funds, how would you go about doing that?
Look for where we can cut that, where, I don't like to take away services. I know I would never take away staff, but look to where we can do some savings. Just like with a home budget, personally, you're always looking to, if you want to buy a boat and you have X amount of dollars, but you need X amount more, I'm looking at where I can save money and where we can trim a little bit in order to eventually meet that goal.
How about then on the income side? You work on expenses, what kind of thoughts on the income side?
Well, one of the things I did in Kansas City is, I don't know if I've told you guys this. I've told so many people today, so it's all running together. But I increased fees for the first time in Kansas City in 20 to 25 years. We don't really know who the last time fees were because there's no documentation. From talking with staff that have been here a while, they think it's about 20, 25 years. So I did a fee study. I studied nationally what the trends were, what locally, some of the other departments, what they're charging. And I raised our fees and I presented, as a year-long process, I presented to the county administrator. I presented to the Parks Board. to the park support, I presented to the elected body, and at the end of the day, it got approved. And so, as OJ were saying, our fees increased for the first time. On the very first day of operation of Reserving Shelters, we had an increase of 20%, which was, it's the same number of shelters, but our revenue was 20% greater, so, and that's only one day, that's a small sample size, but the one fee that I'm most stressed about is our pool is $1 to get in, I raised it to $2. So that's going to be very controversial, I will have probably media come and, and say that I'm gouging the citizens.
Is this the water, is this your water park pool?
It, it's just a normal pool.
Okay, okay. The water park is different.
Right.
It's $2.12 or something.
Yes, exactly.
So virtually no cost of wood increases in the year?
No, no, because they, it's such a diverse and social, the economics are so bad in Kansas City, Kansas, that our elected body has voted to subsidize everything, give everything away for free, and you can't operate like that, and still want to be successful, still want to be able to fix those potholes in the parking lots, and replace those 50-year-old playgrounds.
And just take more money from the neighborhoods that have more money, then everybody wins dead today.
Yes.
I want to ask one more thing that has to do with money. The inclusive playground, obviously you said it was very expensive. How do you sell something to the community who like that, that serves maybe, I mean, obviously any child can go on it, anybody can run it, but it serves a very specific group, and it might be taking a lot of money from something somebody else wants.
Absolutely.
How do, how do you, did you, did you run into that, and how do you deal with that?
Absolutely, I did, and the way I, I sold it was, Kansas City has a 17%, 17% of Kansas City Kansans claim some form of disability, the national average is 13%, so we're well above the national average of persons with disabilities. The need was there, and so I sold the need. Had we not had a need for that, I still would want an inclusive playground, but probably would have scaled it back, because funding is needed elsewhere, but the need is so high in Kansas City that it was a no-brainer that we provide that service. And so, when I went to ask for funding, because it is all privately funded, through different, the Royals are our biggest funder, but...
How's your usage?
It's not built yet.
Oh.
We just finished fundraising.
Okay. So it's 100% funded before you put the spade in the ground?
Right.
Is that typical?
For a smaller project like that, yeah. For example, like you guys are doing with the $77 million project, you want a percentage, but there's still time to fundraise while the construction's going on.
Okay, we're in the home stretch, wrap-up question. That's right, I think we're beyond the 70.
I got this.
So you selected for the position, when would you be able to start?
I would at least want to give my employer one month of notice, and they...
I mean, can we get this in the spring, maybe?
Yeah, maybe after, once it's off, it's the correct answer.
You're going to lie.
Yes, and of course, I have to find a place to live, and, and then I have talked with my family, they'd probably relocate after school without, stuff like that.
Okay, thanks.
The baseball season starts before school gets out.
So they probably actually finish baseball season. I didn't want to say that, but it may get me to look like a baseball snob, but...
You laid the baseball season out on a very big evening.
Yeah, they would probably...
I assumed with two boys that they were playing ball.
And one's named Camden, after Camden Yards, where the Orioles play, and one's Easton, after the baseball bat, so I like baseball.
All right, tell us why you're the best candidate for the executive director position in the Fargo Park District?
Well, with all due respect to the other candidates, every candidate here is qualified. I studied up on them to see what my competition is, and they're all very well-qualified, many of them have ties here to Fargo, but I am an outsider, I do have fresh ideas, I, I've seen how they do it other places, by working with City of Wichita, City of Independence, and Kansas City. I've gotten a good feel of what other people do, and by process of elimination, figured out some of the best ways to do it, I don't have all the answers by any means, so that's one aspect. Another aspect is just my passion. Like I said earlier, I work in the business of play, I, it's the best job in the world. I have the absolute best job, and besides being a baseball player, and that, that means a lot, and I take great pride in that, I, I take great pride in being a public servant, providing those opportunities, and providing those smiles for the youth, and, and special needs, seniors, what have you, it's, but you guys have done a great job of getting down to five very qualified individuals, so I'm honored to be here, and I'm not saying I'm better than any of them, but I think I, I would, me and my family would mesh well with, with this community.
Thank you.
I don't really have any wrap-up questions that you have, you need to answer, but I don't throw them off as questions. They don't tube me where I'm wired. Chiefs or Titans?
Chiefs.
And are you worried you're going to be traveling on Sunday when the game's going on?
I did not think about that. I need to talk to Ollie, make sure she...
Well, if you're on Delta, they got TVs in the back of all the...
I did not think about that, that...
But the port, I think, I mean, he truly has a local concern, I was surprised.
Are they, are they the first or second game? Do you know?
They're two, they're two o'clock.
Two o'clock?
Yes.
Cause the other game in San Francisco, so it'll be the late game.
I almost went to the game the other day, last week's game, it was, tickets were pretty cheap going into it.
But series?
Yeah.
Well, you could have got tickets as people were leaving after the first order.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, that was the most bizarre game I've ever seen.
And then they came back. It's a great time to be a Chiefs fan, and it's fun. After the Royals won the World Series, that was very cool, I was, had a couple World Series games, I was at the wildcard game, and they're fun to go to. But I also do love modern league baseball, we have the Kansas City Pimo's, who play against Fargo.
They're a lovely team.
Yeah, so I enjoy those games, they're fun, they're usually cheaper, you get closer to the field, my boys can actually intermingle with, with the players, and usually they're, they're pretty fan-friendly, and understand the kid aspect, they're always getting balls tossed to them, and things like that, and so...
All right, so the executive director position is pay rate 22, which is a salary range of $114,000 to $152,000, and HR can provide details on the overall fringe benefit packages for you, but do you have any specific salary requirements?
$154,000, I'm kidding. No, I, I currently make $104,000, so it wouldn't be an increase.
Yeah.
So somewhere in, in between, in between there.
Plus you got to buy winter boots.
A coat? That would be my first purchase.
A snow blower?
A snow blower?
You've got two of them, just so you know, they're at home. So, we've hired you, you're six months in, how will we know? Man, we crushed, we got the right guy.
You're going to know for about six months. I'm going to be in constant tune, constant communication with you guys, showing you exactly what I'm doing, here's my thought process. Probably going to be a lot more meetings and verbal communication to start with, to, just so you guys know exactly what I'm doing and why I'm doing it. And if we wait till six months to decide, I've probably failed, and I, I don't want to get to that point.
I might actually ask too, because I didn't ask you this yet. What's a typical day for the executive director of Fargo Parks?
There is no typical day. Every day is different, every day is, there's community meetings, there are answering calls for the community, talking with staff, meeting with staff, looking at, I look at my budget every day of where we are, and as it pertains to a specific project, putting out fires, what broke last night, what, what water pipe broke, or whatever, it's constantly, there's no typical day, it's, it's every, and that's one thing I love, I don't go to work and do the same thing every day for eight hours. I go to work and do different things for 10 to 12 hours.
Would, do you envision your day being here?
Very similar. To start off with, it's going to be more structured with the meetings, meeting with staff, but as I get into it and learn the, the district, and learn where things are, and how things work, it will get a lot more great. I assume whoever gets this position, their phone's going to be ringing off the hook from the community, but people wanting to talk to them, wanting to meet with them, the group I met with before, I'm sure every one of them would want to schedule a one-on-one meeting with me, and so, that's one thing I love, I, I love that, the craziness, I love that it's constantly changing.
Thank you.
So that's kind of the end of it, do you have any questions for us, until we can respond back?
What, what are you looking for? What is your main focus out of it? How did you get down to, to, what brought me here, and, and what are you looking for?
Well, probably the simplest way to answer is, you saw in the job description, we want something that can do it all, you know, we want Superman, or Superwoman, to come in and lead the parks, and provide that, here's where we're going, we have the troops behind me, they're following me, we're going in a good direction, everything is, is just going forward, budget's balanced, get all our stuff bought, we don't have any deferred maintenance, I mean, a perfect world.
Which is a bit of a dream world.
Exactly, exactly. But, you know, I, I think, you know, a leader, somebody that's going to come in and lead this organization is, I don't allow us to characterize, anybody else can jump in.
Well, we had, as Jerry said earlier, you know, the executive director prior to our most current one was here for 20-plus years, he worked under the executive director before him, who'd been here for 20-plus years, and so there was a level of comfort within, and everybody got the job done, and they still get the job done, even if things are tough. And so we've got a great staff, but they, they're looking for someone to follow, and not that they can't leave on their own, but some, you know, some semblance of...
Strategy.
Direction. Now I can just do my job and... That's what I want. Vision, a plan. Right.
I think the next person I'll ask would be spoiled, we have a great staff, we have great funding, we have great facilities, and you're not really...
Great community.
Right, I mean, there's, all the pieces are there.
That's a dream job, Parks and Recreation, that's why I told my wife that much, it's a dream job.
I'm looking for someone to maintain that, but then I'm also, I like to change, like to get on the cutting edge, and you'll introduce someone that, too, and sometimes bringing staff along, that I think Jerry mentioned, we have a lot of directors that have been here for a long time, so complacency, you know, change can be tough, and when you introduce new things, it's making sure that they're coming along with you, too, right?
Obviously, you guys are well-infested in Fargo, what, what do you guys like the most about the community, and what keeps you here?
Well, the roads are closed, so we can't leave.
Shut the gates!
Leave, they're closed.
That's what I'm saying.
I think the common answer that everyone would probably say, which always sounds like we're lying, is the people. It's, it's really, we like being around nice people, we like being in a community where people get along, and for the most part, you don't have to worry about walking out your front door and what the heck's going to happen. So that's...
I'm still trying to wrap my head around the, all those kid, 300 kids sitting on school buses, waiting to get out of the parking lot, and I think our kids would be scarred for life if they experienced that, and that's a compliment to the world that our kids live in, and the fact that that's just not the reality here.
We live in our own bubble.
Yeah, hence, that's a good thing, that's...
Right, that's what I'm saying.
To be surprised and scarred and scared, I don't want that to be an everyday life, that's, most of those kids, they see that every day.
We're, I mean, the park district is part of why people stay here.
Right.
We have awesome facilities, there's always something to do, you know, I obviously like the spring and summer, fall better, but, and there's things to do in the winter, I just think about.
They say the weather keeps the work out, oh, I think there's some truth to that, absolutely. The other thing that, you know, I've traveled a bit over my life, and I love it when I have to, when I get home and complain that it took me 10 minutes, traffic was unbearable tonight, it took me 10 minutes to get home, because like my son lives in Washington DC, and it's 10 minutes to train people, and then it's another train ride, you know, and it's, it's stuff like that, it's like, that's not quality of life.
Right.
It's, you know, quality of life isn't the weather out here, but, you know, we deal with it because of the rest of the 300 days a year, that it's not like this, so...
And you're not going to spend any less time at work, I mean, that's quality time that you're spending away from your family, from your community, back and forth.
We have a strong structure of schools, our, our public school system is enviable in the area, with different arts, whatever you want to be involved in, there are a lot of different things kids can do, can be safe doing that. Biggie's son, you catch one. And he was a hockey player.
And you talk about people, and you talk about quality of people, and, and so we have a very strong relationship between our city government, our, our Parks and Rec, and our school district. I mean, we, we have lots of joint venture ships in lands, we have, you know, joint venture ships in buying the flowers for, for down here, I mean, we, we, and I'm not saying that's even that way in the metro area, let alone, you know, the state area, but we just, we really have strong relationships between those three entities, which I think makes us all very, very strong.
Absolutely.
And by us being an independent, collecting our own taxes, we, we, we have our own place at the table, we, we might not be, you know, an adult at the table, but we have our own place at the table, people don't push us around or tell us how things are going to be, because it's, we're not a light item in their budget, we, we have our own, so...
That's awesome. Yeah.
That's all I have, one more question, so I, obviously, if offered the job, I'll have way more questions, specific questions. Have you ever eaten smoking guns before?
No.
It's a really good, uh, place in Kansas City, it serves brisket and all that stuff.
That was a new place in town.
I love, different, the best barbecue places are the places that you kind of look at, it's open.
Yeah.
And that's just funny.
Yeah.
Dumpsters and dives, or whatever, that is on TV, we Google that, I mean, you're in Kansas City for wrestling, so.
Actually, we're in St. Joe's.
Okay.
That's up in Kansas City?
Yeah, that's just north of me on 29.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you guys, I really appreciate it.
I'll give you that tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you, I got to make that game. Now it's kind of scary.
Maybe we can negotiate staying until Monday, if that, if they get jammed up.
My pleasure.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, I really appreciate it, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Nice seeing you guys, thank you.
Somebody will come by downtown, this is for real, to take this one, because you leave outside.
Don't, don't forget his jacket!
Right.
Don't forget your jacket!
Absolutely.
That's down, that baby will keep you nice somewhere.
That looks very warm.
And you stay in downtown?
I am, I'm at the Raisers.
Well, because there's a, my favorite downtown restaurant is Buzzaluna. It's an American place, but it's, it's not on Broadway, I'm trying to think, what's that building? Wherever Sandy's Donuts is, it's like, got a little walk-through in the next, that's pretty good. Odo's pretty good, too, it's a, it's a park for whatever you're at.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Stay warm.
Yeah.
Thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome, thanks for coming.
We have to text my uncle.
We have to stay somewhere, we're waiting for Becky and Rusty.
My husband, he didn't work in the afternoon, I'm like, well, then you can drive me around.
Oh, I was going to say, I can be around, if we're going to need a takeover, you need to text your husband.
So I played golf in Kansas City in the Mermit season?
I've not.
They've got Zoijer grass in the fairways.
Oh, yeah.
And so, the fairways are all kind of a neat color, and the rough is green.
Oh.
So you can bear, you can't see a ball very well in the fairways, because it's kind of this yellow, so it's the haze.
So it went into the rough.
It's really... That's the most interesting part.
Right, I hear them talking in Croatia, up on PGA. I don't want to talk, but I don't.
It's Bermuda-ish in feel, like you have to know about rubbery feel, but it's kind of great, you know I love grass.
So, just to show you, I interviewed really well on the first go-round. And we can hire two, two out of the three we've interviewed. I, I could see him running this organization every bit as much as anybody else personally. I don't know, what's your guys thought?
Uh, it's, he's comfortable to tackle and it's nice, it's nice to be comfortable. And he's humble, he doesn't come off as being, I mean, it wasn't rote, it wasn't the textbook explanation. It was connected and-
He gave appropriate, I mean, he was, when he was explaining himself, when it was appropriate to give an example, an actual example, he did it because he was actually trying to answer questions as opposed to giving you a nice textbook.
No, I could be two out of three very strong candidates so far. This is not going to be an easy decision, which is good.
And then Monday then is, what's his date?
Ken Keas, and he interviewed very well.
He did.
Just a small, smaller, smaller budget, smaller set.
Yeah, that was the thing, I interviewed very well. Review of stuff, he doesn't have a big huge, I mean, this guy can, he's-
Similar in size, it seems like, I mean, obviously-
Similar, but the budget's a lot smaller.
Yeah.
But after ours adds on, you have Corso, State Valley Secret Services, it takes some of that. But it is a pretty small budget for him with that much staff. I assume, Sunday should be a problem travel, I mean, I, I think he's going to be here on Sunday and Monday will be on Saturday, but we'll see.
I wanted to get away from saying that he's not going until Sunday, and it's like, I'm going to be out here, so.
Well, tomorrow's completely off.
She, she said it's going to be Sunday. So it's supposed to be Blizzard through tomorrow. What I feel worse about is he's losing the weekend with his race.
Yeah, that's awesome.
Which is always a bummer when you, you know.
Well, sometimes it's good to get away from that, just for a weekend.
Yeah, you only get so many.
Be stuck in the red.
He really hates the coat now.
We probably don't go to the air.
The minutes will show that the executive session was adjourned at approximately 4:35. We're back in the public meeting room and back in open session. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Meeting adjourned.